I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the formalities because we all know who we are on this thread, or on this, on this WebEx. Bob, we're gonna jump right to you for third quarter projections, please.
Okay.
And Bob, please keep your presentation to about 10 minutes.
Got it. Sure. Thank you. So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, and we're here to provide the committee and the council an update on our third quarter projection.
Mr. Sennemy, one second. This is the President. Councilman, do we know if Bob has a presentation, are we gonna share that on the screen?
Yes, we can. They did provide something. Marguerite, do you want to post that, or do you want me to?
No, it's gonna be posted in one second.
Thank you, Marguerite.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Mara, Mara is also on the call, so she's, she has the presentation. She's gonna put that up on the screen as the, as the presenter, so you should, got it. There we go.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is Matt Tinker from the Mayor's Office. I do realize now, I did send copies of that presentation to the members of the committee, and I did send it to the council president's staff, but not to him directly. So, Mr. President, I'm gonna send that to you right now.
No, no worries, Matt. I just always wanted to be up in the WebEx as well, just for folks who are tuning in so that they can see it.
Yeah, that, that is very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, you should be able to see the slides up on the screen now, so we'll, we'll go ahead and take it away. So again, this is the fiscal 2020, third quarter projection. And on the first slide, on slide two, you'll see, this shows the progression of kind of where we've come over the course of this fiscal year. So, the, for both the first quarter and the second quarter projection, you'll notice, we were cruising along. At the second quarter projection, we were expecting a net surplus of $26.4 million in the general fund. The last two columns, the second quarter revised, and now the third quarter projection, take into account the COVID impact. So, the second quarter revised projection was a deficit of $42.3 million. And I just want to note that that projection at that point, since it was very early in the crisis, it did not yet include any COVID-19 response costs. Again, because we were very early in the process. We knew there would be response costs, and we were hopeful that the, the federal government would be helping us on those costs, but we just didn't know what those were. Now, with the third quarter, we're revising our revenue estimate, and we're also adding in the COVID-19 response costs. So you can see on this slide, that we've actually just added a whole nother row for it. So we've broken our expenditures into baseline expenditures and COVID-19 expenditures, which are really the response costs to respond to the pandemic. And so by adding those response costs in, we've revised our projection to a deficit of $106.4 million. But just a reminder that we still do believe that those response costs are going to be covered by federal aid, and we'll touch on that a little bit later in the, in the presentation. On the next slide, we wanted to go through all of the individual revenue sources. So Mara, if you could jump ahead to slide three, there we go. So, this slide shows all of our revenues, our key revenues, again, what was budgeted, what we had in the second quarter, what we had at the revised second quarter projection, right at the beginning of the pandemic, and then now for the third quarter. And I'll run through these pretty quickly. So, on property tax, essentially, most of the revenue has been already collected in this source. We did decide to delay tax sale into July to give a break to folks who were, who might have been struggling to pay their bills, but most of the tax has been collected anyway. And so we're still showing this as a small surplus, about $500,000 above the adopted budget. On income tax, prior to COVID-19, if we remember, the receipts and income tax were very strong. If, if you recall, the, the change in the federal tax law had led us to see higher state and local income tax receipts. So before the pandemic, we were cruising along. We had really strong receipts in income tax. Post-COVID, what has happened is, the state with, shares withholdings back with local jurisdictions, that's usually on about a one to two month delay. And so we haven't seen an impact yet of some of the unemployment that has taken place in the economy over the last month and a half or so. We also know that unemployment insurance is taxable. And what that means is, if somebody lost their job, you know, due to this crisis we're going through, they, they, they make up some of their lost income through state unemployment insurance, and the stimulus package also provides some additional unemployment insurance. And the combination of those things all still counts as taxable income. So because of that, we don't think there's going to be a real strong net effect on income tax in fiscal '20. But later, when we get to fiscal '21, we do think there will be an impact later in fiscal '21. So for income tax for fiscal '20, we're still showing a $25 million surplus versus the adopted budget. The next couple items is where we get into the, the items that have been hit really hard. So first, on highway user revenue, we're assuming a 40% lower automobile activity during the fourth quarter of fiscal 2020. That lower activity leads to fewer receipts in all of the income categories that are shared with local jurisdictions. This is things like the gas tax, vehicle titling fees, and vehicle registration fees. And so we're expecting to come in $22.6 million below budget on, on highway user revenue. For transfer and recordation, we know that our, we have looked at April volume in the housing market. We're down 75% in terms of activity in April versus the prior year's April activity. We do know that there is a little bit of delay on the finance operation side with processing transactions, so we think that this will improve as we catch up. But again, volume is down significantly, and we're also seeing way fewer multimillion dollar transactions. So, for example, we usually see about 20 to 30 of those very high value transactions per month. In April, we only had five. And so our projection is that we'll, we'll fall short by $13.4 million versus the adopted budget in transfer and recordation. Traffic cameras was one area where we had a, I would say, a surprise in a, in a positive way. When the pandemic hit, we had expected, since there would be fewer people on the roads, and fewer people traveling, that there would be fewer traffic camera violations. What we found is that in the April data, we actually had one of our highest months ever of, of speed camera violations in terms of the number of citations. And at first, we thought, this must be some kind of error or mistake, but it turns out that this is, after talking to DOT and looking at some of the research that's being done nationwide, looks like a trend that as there's fewer people on the roads, there are more people that are breaking speeding laws and violating parking laws. So we're seeing more, actually, speed camera revenues during this time, because since there's less, less traffic on the roads, people seem to be able to pick up speed easier at some of those, at some of those key intersections. On net parking revenues, we're down $15.6 million versus the adopted budget. We're getting, we're getting crushed here, to be, to be very honest. Parking meters, of course, we did make a policy decision to stop enforcing those. On parking fines, we're really only giving tickets now to enforcing areas where we have significant public safety issues, so there's not many fines being issued. And then on parking tax revenue and garage income, we're getting hit really hard. We're projected down 70% for the fourth quarter versus where we were last year. And again, the reasons for that are obvious, less people traveling, less people parking in either parking lots or in our garages. Hotel tax, also getting really crushed. Hotel tax, we're down $11.1 million versus the adopted budget. Occupancy rates are very low, single-digit occupancy rates, whereas normally, at this time of the year, we would be seeing 65% to 70% in some case occupancy in those hotels. So down 11.1 versus the adopted. And then the final couple categories, investment earnings, down 2.9% versus the adopted budget because the Fed has taken actions to lower interest rates. We're down 2.9% versus the adopted budget on convention center receipts, because there's no events for the fourth quarter there. And we're also down $3 million versus the adopted budget on admissions and amusement tax, due to just the lack of any kind of ticketed events, especially for sporting events or concerts where we usually see our revenues there. So really, outside of income tax, which was doing really well before the pandemic, and traffic cameras, which has been kind of a surprise that we've, we've done better there, pretty much everything else is down across the board. On the next slide, in terms of expenditures, so if you recall, about two weeks ago, Finance had presented a very detailed bill response about all the costs that we've seen so far for COVID-19. And I'm not gonna go into all that detail now that is available on that particular bill response. This slide here just summarizes what we had told folks earlier about the response expenses. So you'll notice that through the end of June on this slide, we would expect to see $78.7 million of response costs. Only $51.7 million of those are general fund costs. The other costs have another funding source, either CDBG, or the Youth Fund, or a supplemental ESG grant we got for homeless services. So, for this projection, we're counting just $51.7 of the cost to be in the general fund through the end of the fiscal year. On the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about how we plan to close for this year. So just a reminder of how this works, the Charter says that we must end the fiscal year with the general funded balance. It doesn't actually say that directly, but it's implied in Article 6, Section 8. It says that if there is a deficiency of income, and by income, they're referring to all of the city's revenues combined, that there are really only two options. One is that we would enact mid-year Board of Estimates reductions, or two, that we would create a new revenue source in the middle of the year to meet that deficiency. For practical purposes, because we were so late in the fiscal year this year, we did not want to enact mid-year budget reductions, and we would, did not want to go out with new taxes or fees to our, to our residents. And so this is essentially why the rainy day exists, for this circumstance exactly. We have saved money over many years to, to prevent this type of situation, to make sure we can meet the Charter requirement, to end with a balanced budget. The policy says that we can only use it to, to close the general fund, to avoid a year-end deficit, which, as I mentioned, is prohibited by the city Charter. And it can only be used for, quote, "a post-adopted budget that has been impacted by an uncontrollable shortfall in either budgeted revenues or expenses," which of course, the COVID-19 situation applies to that. So, the actions that we will take to close the budget this year, on the next slide, there's two things that we must do. First, we will need to cover those extra COVID response expenses, the $51.7 million of COVID response expenses. And so the action that will need to be taken is we will do supplemental appropriation bills. We will propose those to the council. We'll need to go to the Board of Estimates first. And we'll do those for all of the, the agencies that we know of that have incremental expenses because of COVID-19. At the moment, we know that that's the Health Department, Police, Fire, Homeless Services, and DGS, and MOCFS, which is the Office of Children, Youth, and Children and Family Success. Those agencies have been helping with the food distribution. At this point, again, we project $51.7 million of total expense cost. That is, of course, subject to change through the end of the year, if anything changes at the end of May or through June. But that would be the first action that we expect to take. The second action that we'll need to take, at this point, is to draw $54.7 million out of the Rainy Day Fund to close the remaining general fund deficit. And that is largely because of the lost revenues we've seen from this event. That, that particular action only requires Board of Estimates approval, so we will be seeking both of those actions sometime in July. Traditionally, we have gone to the Board now, and asked for that permission now, and then gone to the council as soon as we can. But because of the uncertainty, and just because there's so many, a lot of data for us to go through to figure out exactly how we're going to land, we're not going to formally submit the, the bills and the request likely until early July, when we get a little bit of a better handle on what actually plays out in June. And so I just want the council to be aware of that, that we will be coming back a little bit later than usual for the, for the supplemental actions. I did want to mention here, in closing, that there are two other things that we can do to try to, to try to soften the blow before the end of the year. One of those things we're already doing, we have a nonessential hiring and spending freeze in place. And the reason for that is that we're trying to accrue any savings, any dollars that we just don't need to spend during a time of emergency, to reduce the need to go into our, our reserves. We also have, we also, as part of the nonessential hiring and spending freeze, we, we instructed agencies to pause any capital projects that were being funded by recurring or current revenues. What we commonly refer to as PEGO capital projects. We had $50 million of PEGO projects in the fiscal '20 budget. Some of those have already started, and the work has begun, but we believe that we have somewhere in the range of 30 to 35 million of those projects that we could forego and defer to help us to bring, to get us to balance. If we do take action there, the effect would be that we would not have to draw as much money out of the, of the Rainy Day Fund to close fiscal 2020. Just one note in closing, I wanted to mention, you know, over the course of these last couple months, there's been a lot of, you know, comments and, and, and just, just discussion about the Rainy Day Fund. I just want to be clear, we don't, we don't use, we don't see the Rainy Day Fund as some kind of badge of honor that we hold there to be proud of ourselves. The reason we've saved that money over many years is that it's available in a time like this. And the reason we'd like to preserve it at the end of fiscal '20 as well, is that we're heading into another fiscal year or more of just enormous uncertainty. And if we don't get additional federal aid, it's very likely that we would have to dip into the Rainy Day Fund again in fiscal '21 to cover, cover either additional response costs after our federal aid runs out, or to protect us against even worse declines in revenue if the situation gets worse. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because I have seen some, some things that were not clear on why we have a Rainy Day Fund. I just wanted to clarify those points before we close. And hopefully, I got that in within 10 minutes. And again, happy to pause now and take any questions from, from any of the council members.
Bob, that was very helpful. Thank you. Mara, if you could take the, remove the presentation, so we can go to grid view, thank you so much. We'll start off with the President. Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bob, as always. And thank you for, for your, for your hard work. And Bob, I just want to go to the, to the last point, the last points that you made about the, the PEGO capital projects, trying to close the gap. Can you talk about some of those things, some of the capital projects that, that will be considered, that we will forego? If you could name some of the ones that you were talking about?
Sure. So there were, there were a whole host of things among many agencies. There were, there were B-SIT IT projects, there was funding for general services for city buildings, funding for a handful of DOT projects, there was money for public markets, there's a whole list of those things. And so, it was 50 million total, if you remember, in the fiscal '20 budget, that we had, we had set that money aside. And we, we had actually done that on purpose, because we, we didn't want to have a, commit extra dollars that we had to recurring operating services, because it gave us a little bit more flexibility, which we have now. You know, we, we are going to go through those projects line by line. The policy on the Rainy Day Fund does say that we have to take every action that is absolutely possible before we would dip into the fund. So we think it is, it's the right thing to do to go through some of those projects and see if we can defer them into future years to help balance for this year. But, you know, we, we are of the opinion of there, these are valuable projects, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of trying to protect the city's reserves and keeping us protected going into fiscal '21 and beyond. So I don't have any details yet on which ones we would forego, but that's something that we're still discussing internally.
Yeah, thank you. And I would just ask that, when you guys do that, that you get that information over to us as quickly as possible, and then also understanding some of the things that are, that are in there, that I think that we put off for far too long, like, for example, because we know, and is there, there's feedback coming, so someone has their stuff off, maybe or something. Oh, Councilman, it's you, actually, I think. But, but what we have to do, Mr. Sennemy, is make sure that these are not projects that are putting us more at risk. For example, if you go back and look at the B-SIT projects and their projects that are related to cybersecurity, which we know is even more of a threat now, because we're in a global pandemic and those folks are looking to attack us, I think that we're gonna have to weigh out all of those balances, especially even if it's some of the infrastructure things. And, and it wouldn't be, I, I wouldn't be me if I didn't point out, especially to your point, to help you out, that I think that this is another reason why we might look at making tweaks at the BOE to the Rainy Day Policy, so that you're not being put in a position to cut off your nose and spite your face. So I think that we have to, we have to balance all of that workout. My second question to you is around-
Yeah, we will, I, I, we will, just to respond to that, we, we definitely will. We've already started thinking about that as we go through the projects. If there's something that's really critical, yeah, we don't want to be foolish about it. So we are thinking about that as we go through each of those projects. Some are a little easier to throw overboard, some other ones we might just need to preserve, either if they've started, or if they're very critical for some other reason.
Thank you. My second, my second question is around the 51.7, the projection for the agencies, and just want to see, as we move forward, how much do you think of that we'll be able to get recouped in the future? And how do you think that, that the possibility of having the federal aid come will help you on the backend?
Yeah, so the, the good news on that front is, of those expenses, we feel very confident that we can use, that federal aid will cover all of those. And the, the good news is that we have actually already received our check from the US Treasury in the initial stimulus bill, or, or I guess they called it Stim, Stimulus Bill Number Two or Three, the, the one that had the, the state stabilization money. For Baltimore, since we're a city that has greater than 500,000 residents, we got that money directly from the Treasury. We don't have to ask the state of Maryland for that. So you might hear some other counties, you know, just, just complaining a little bit, because they have to go through the state to get that money. But luckily for Baltimore, we got that check right from the US Treasury. The, the, the rules for that funding is very generous. It basically says that anything that's a COVID-related expense, you can charge against that fund. So our intent is to cover all of those costs with that money. The one thing just to be careful about is, you know, if we use 51 million, like we've said, that's about half of the money, and that was only for three months. So that means that the rest of it, if we're in a situation like we have now, you know, we could run out of that federal aid by the end of the first quarter in fiscal '21. And then that becomes a situation where the Rainy Day Fund is the only remaining backstop for either lost revenue or further expenses. I mean, you know, we are very hopeful that we're gonna get a second round of stimulus. I know there's been discussions at the federal level. You know, there's some posturing going on now, as usual, but we feel confident that in, in the next round, there will be something for state and local governments that would help supplement that. But we just don't, we don't know what that is at this point, obviously, and we can't count on it for sure. So, so we do expect all of those costs to be paid for by that, that stimulus money.
Thank you, and thank you. And yeah, it wouldn't be DC if there wasn't some posturing going on. And you know, we'll try to push them out in to make sure that anything's happening. My, my last question, Mr. Chair, Bob, is just, I know you're not a wizard that looks into the future, but looking at the revenue projection, and I think I know what you're gonna say, looking at all of the, the, everything that's in the red, and thinking out, projecting out, as we close out, but also as we move into next fiscal year, what do, where do you see that, or are you projecting that we're gonna struggle the most to start to rebound once things are opened up?
That's, yeah, that's, so we'll, we'll talk in more detail about that in the fiscal '21 overview, but I can just give you my, my gut comments now. I think, as long as the current situation we have lasts, we're continue to, gonna struggle, we're going to continue to struggle on the things that we've discussed, those tourist-related revenues, those parking-related revenues. As we get into fiscal '21, my concern is that, you know, those things will probably remain soft as long as there's restrictions on travel. And then, you know, the income tax and the property tax, which are our two biggest sources, we really didn't take, we don't think we'll take much of a hit from those in fiscal 2020. Part of it's just the timing of when this hit, it was the end of a fiscal year. But I think our biggest concern going forward is that we kind of know the impact of these immediate tourist-related, parking-related revenues. Our concerns are kind of more broad, like how will this affect our income tax base going forward, and our property tax base? I think, you know, one of the, one of the cases that, when we were talking about the rental assistance, assistance program that HCD is running now, one of the things that convinced me, not that I was the ultimate decider on that, but one of the things that convinced me that it was the right thing to do, is that you have to kind of keep the housing market flowing, right? If people can't make their rent, then there's a landlord who might not be able to pay their property taxes and so forth down, down the chain. So, we're hoping that some of the money we have available for these, you know, short-term interventions like that, will help protect some of those more, you know, those bigger revenue sources for us, frankly. And I, I do have a concern, you know, the instinct is, you know, you see these projections that maybe, you know, 40% or 50% of businesses or small businesses won't come back. You know, many of those places own their properties, and if they abandon those properties, does the assessed value come down over time? So I would just say, everything is really at risk right now. Like, all of our revenue sources are, are at risk. There's very few that are not going to be affected, unfortunately, by this, by this situation. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, what do you think is gonna be the timing of the supplementary appropriations for the two that you discussed?
Yeah, so, we're, we're asking to, to, to do that in early July. And like I was saying, the reason for that is, usually at this time, if we were just cruising and we knew where we were going to end-
I don't mean to cut you off. I'm, I'm good with the reasoning that you said before. I was, I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I would say, I would-
Is there any requirement for us to have everything balanced out by a certain date?
No, we, we went through this a couple years ago. Our understanding is that as long as we submit the supplemental to you, and it's clearly articulated that it's for fiscal year 2020, that there's no legal restriction on when we get those to you. Our process after the close is that the audit of the financial statements goes on, and we try to get our financial statements delivered by, you know, December or January. So we don't think that there's any limitation, so it'll just be delayed by a few weeks this year. But we, we don't expect any more delay after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And I'll just note, I certainly appreciate all the hard work that you all have been putting in in BBMR and Finance, especially dealing with, with all these new expenditures, and money coming in from the federal government through the CARES Act. I recognize that you guys have had your hands full, so I appreciate the thought and all the hard work. Colleagues, any question?
Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to reiterate your comments related to the Finance Department and the job that they're doing, doing this crisis. Bob, my, my first question is related to the emergency spending. The Charter says that a full report of that expending, expenditures would go to the Board of Estimates promptly. When do we anticipate that report coming before the Board of Estimates?
Sir, yeah, Daniel can answer that. He's with me here.
Hi, Councilman. We, we plan to be, to start submitting them in June. We want to have them all in prior to July 1, so that, you know, we make sure that they're accounted for in fiscal year 20.
Okay.
So you'll start seeing, kind of, they'll, they'll come most likely in batches. But they'll probably start coming to the Board of Estimates sometime, starting, you know, starting in June, and then, and then through, through June, prior to July 1.
Okay. Thank you. And then I had one other question, but I wanted to reiterate what Council President said. He was spot on when he talked about the PEGO capital projects, that we, we're really mindful of what, which projects we, we don't fund. Because I think, even with the economy, the way that it is, or the way we anticipate, we do, we still need to generate projects that are creating jobs and helping to stimulate the economy. And so we, as he said, we don't want to cut off our nose despite our face. We want to make certain that we're supporting those projects. And then, lastly, can you just, one of the comments says that we are looking at savings generated from nonessential spending. Can you, can you elaborate just a little bit more on what you are considering to be nonessential spending?
Sure. So what we did was, when the, when, when all this hit, again, back in April, or, or late March, early April, we basically instructed agencies, because we know we have a, a financial issue on top of a health issue, that we just limit any nonessential spending. And by nonessential spending, I would mean, there are a handful of services that are not operating right now in certain agencies, because they are not as critical to public safety. So for the protection of our employees and for the public, those are not operating. And in addition to that, we're not- Um, and in addition to that, uh, we're not, we're, we're basically telling agencies that they have to ask for permission to hire um, non-critical frontline employees at this time. So that means like things like administrative positions, analyst-type positions, um, that they have to ask for a waiver from finance to hire for that so that we can accrue some savings uh through the end of the year. We are still hiring, of course, frontline police officers uh and, and public safety officers, but for non-public safety and non-frontline employees, we've paused uh hiring. And again, the reason for that is that so that we, since we are running a deficit at fiscal twenty so that we can minimize any cost that we have through the end of the fiscal year, uh, and hopefully minimize the drawdown on our reserve fund.
No, I mean, thank you for that. I, I just wanted to make certain it was clear that there's a difference between non-essential in the middle, in the midst of the pandemic as a, there's a difference between that and, and non-essential and.
Yeah, any, any emergency response related is still, is still happening full speed ahead. So that, that does not apply to anything that's in direct response to the pandemic.
Okay. Um, thank you, Bob. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. Colleagues?
I got a question.
Councilman Schleifer?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Bob, for the presentation and for everything you're doing. I've got a question about, I was looking through the budget books, and there's certain departments that are newly formed and creating a bunch of positions. Are those considered frozen as well?
So you, you, you're referring to the fiscal twenty twenty one budget books that were being distributed today?
Correct.
Yeah, so um, there are, uh, there are a handful of new positions in the fiscal twenty one budget. Uh, the same rule that's applying for this uh period that we're in will extend, we believe, into fiscal twenty one. So we're just being cautious on uh even new positions that were created as part of the twenty one budget. Uh, the, there, we left some positions in the budget uh for things that we wanted to invest in, and we'll talk a little bit more about those things in the next presentation. So, so we have them in the budget, but we are going to freeze hiring unless they're absolutely critical going into fiscal twenty one. And again, that's just because there's so much uncertainty on the revenue forecast uh for fiscal twenty one and beyond. We want to be able to, to afford those and, and wait till we get the evidence that we can afford them.
Gotcha. So can you give like a couple of examples on what, um, on what kind of positions you're talking about that um, that you guys are still moving ahead with that are new positions?
Yeah, so the, the ones, the, the, the stuff that we're still hiring for is, 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 the, the big example is public safety. Um, you know, public safety, it doesn't do us any good to freeze those positions because since there is a certain amount of coverage that we need uh to, to be safe, we end up just spending on overtime if we don't have enough, enough bodies to do the work. So definitely on public safety, we've instructed them that they can continue. But really outside of public safety, and I would say like direct frontline services, things like, you know, solid waste collection, for example, outside of those services, or again, emergency-related health response positions, we've frozen those other, other hires. Uh, that does not mean that an agency doesn't, cannot ask. So the process is set up that if an agency has something that they think is really critical to continue important work, they just put in a, a request uh through finance. We review it. We go over it with with the appropriate agency head and deputy mayor, and there have been a handful of those that we've approved because there's some work that we think is critical that's going on. But on a broader basis, it's public safety, keep moving, and everybody else just kind of pause for the moment.
Right. So something like the, um, like the newly formed Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Um, you know, that, there's a bunch of questions in the budget, a bunch of new positions. Will that, will those positions be, be funded?
Bob, Bob, can you hang on? Councilman, I'd like to, I'd like to leave that question to the overview for twenty twenty one just because this is really a, a focus on fiscal, fiscal twenty twenty quarter three, if that's all right.
Department will be staffed or not? I mean, it's pretty significant for the general overview if we're talking about freezing positions.
We're not at, yeah, but Councilman, we're not at the general overview. We're doing fiscal, fiscal, fiscal twenty quarter three. We're just doing where things are at, not planning for next year's budget. That's why I want to move that question to the portion where we're doing the fiscal twenty one overview.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer, you have any other questions related to quarter three?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for Bob?
I, I do.
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. Uh, could you just, um, Mr. Senator, could you please just go over again the, the way we're using the money that has come in already from the feds for um coronavirus um expenses? You're sensible. I just, I just wanted to hear it once again so I understand the, the math that you're using.
Sure. So we, we expect to have um fifty one point seven million dollars of general fund expenses for COVID nineteen through the end of the year. We got, we already have received a check from the feds, from the US Treasury for about a hundred and three million. So we expect to use about half of that hundred and three million, the fifty one point seven, uh, to pay for the expenses that we've incurred in this fiscal year. Uh, and then the remaining, the remaining money will stay to pay for, uh, because we, we believe that some of these response uh, uh, costs will, will stay into fiscal twenty one. We'll use the balance to pay for anything that runs into fiscal twenty one.
And so that leads to a question I hadn't thought of before, but at the end of the fiscal year, we have to balance the budget. We have that money. So basically, how does that figure into our revenues? In other words, when you're looking at both sides of the ledger about closing out the year.
Right.
It's got, we have twice as much money as the lower, as, as the deficit right now, almost, which is new revenue. So how does that, so how do we balance? Do we use that?
Yes, yes.
And so the impact on our general fund is minimal?
Yeah, so we, we would use, we'll use the CARES money, that, that cash that we have on hand. And that will be used to pay for additional appropriation in those agencies I mentioned that have response costs, the health, the police, the fire, um, DPW, or I'm sorry, homeless services, et cetera. So yes, we actually will use that cash to cover those costs, and that's a one-time cost, and then hopefully that goes away in the long term. And the balance of the funds we got from the federal government, we would expect to use for anything that lasts into fiscal twenty one. So we'll still have about fifty million left uh that we'll hang on to, that we'll use for any costs that, that remain in fiscal twenty one.
And last question, relate, last related question. So in addition to, so is our deficit actually related to COVID-related eligible activities for which we have the monies?
So the, the deficit, so I, I, I like to think of the, the deficit we're facing, there's two pieces. There's the fifty one point seven, which is expenses that were, you know, new expenses, and that's covered by the federal government. What they're not covering is all the lost revenues that we.
Okay, that's the point, yeah.
That, that is a real general fund deficit. That's the fifty four point seven that we mentioned, and that's where we do have to, we would have to use our rainy day fund uh to balance in order to meet the charter requirement to have a, a, a balanced budget at the end of the year. We cannot use federal CARES money at this point to, to backfill lost revenues to just balance a general shortfall.
Got you. That's, thank you. That's what I needed to understand.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other colleagues?
Uh, yes, just a quick question. Um, hi, Bob.
Hi.
Um, I, I know you had mentioned that um the, the federal money from the CARES Act basically skipped over the state, and we, uh, the money went directly to local government, which definitely was a plus. Is, is there any other um money that is going to be generated straight from the federal government to the, to the local bypassing, you know, time going through the state?
Yeah, so it, it, so there is, you know, there's another round of relief that's being discussed now at the federal level, so we're not sure how that will play out. We do know that in the first round, excuse me, that there were, um, there are other, a handful of other agencies that got supplemental awards that they're distributing to local jurisdictions, and local governments have to apply for those funds. So we know, for example, that like CDC has some funds available, Department of Justice, uh, CDBG, which we've already mentioned, which we're using for rental assistance. There's a bunch of stuff available. Um, we have an internal team that's looking at all those awards to see if applying for some of those funds uh can protect some of the more general money that came from CARES. Uh, we're also using our, um, our tenure planned uh consultant, Ernstin Young, is helping us coordinate some of that work. So we have an internal team that's in place that's managing and looking into all those sources. And then we have a team that's plugged into the law and the federal government and all the rules for those new sources of funding because anything else that we can get from those sources would preserve more of this general CARES money that we got, that hundred and three million. So there might be opportunities, like I said, through either FEMA or CDC or Department of Justice or CDBG or Health and Housing, you know, any one of the federal agencies, there's a lot of additional buckets of, of money available, but they're much smaller generally than the big chunk that we got already. Um, so absent another bill in Congress, we probably can't count on another big chunk unless they pass something in addition.
If, if you need, um, I guess to stay primitive as you're going through this, if you need uh letters from, you know, a formal letter from the kind of presidential council members um ahead of time to our federal partners, that would be good. And also, um, I know that the National Association of Counties and the Maryland Association of Counties also did a huge letter writing to get that push, to make that direct contact. And, and that worked really well around the country. I think that was um, a, a big push in, in making that transfer happen to, so we could get the money quickly. So.
Okay, yeah.
We move forward with those kinds of proactive things.
Yeah, we, we, we do know that the mayor has signed on to a letter with a bunch of other county local executives talking about just the, there's the need for it. So yeah, if there's additional help needed or voices, we will certainly reach out to get, you know, collectively that voice heard.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, any other questions for Bob?
Hey, Mr. Chair, Councilman Burnett. Um, would this be a time to ask a question about the rental assistance program, or do you want me to hold off for later?
Um, no, go ahead. I, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I just had, just basically asked for a basic overview on uh the timeline for that. I've had uh some folks in my district reach out wanting more information, and we just haven't gotten it yet. So just wanted to see if there was a way we can get an update on where that stands.
Yeah, so I, I can, uh, Councilman, I can tell you what I know. Um, you know, Michael Braverman kind of walked me through the, the numbers last week just to get an understanding of what the program looks like. Um, there's a lot of nuances to it. We're trying to, you know, he's trying to focus the money directly on the people that we think will be um, in need or that, you know, don't have other sources of income, either through federal, you know, rental subsidies or unemployment insurance or other sources of money. Um, I think your best bet would be to reach out to housing. I don't want to speak for him because the program is, 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 it's, I wouldn't say it's complicated, but there are a lot of nuances to it. And so I just saw a preliminary number, um, just so he could walk me through how it's being spent, but it's probably best to speak to housing directly uh, once they're ready to share something.
Um, I'll do that.
Okay.
And uh, Councilman, this is uh Matt Steggen. Uh, so I, I know a couple of council offices have reached out. Uh, I just, I wanted to reiterate, uh, you know, we, we are confident, we, we guarantee that this program is going to be uh, ready and up and running before we, uh, you know, before the moratorium on, uh, on evictions is in place so that we can get help people, get, get help to people when they need it. And uh, as soon as all of that information is available, we will absolutely get it to all the council offices because we are going to need your partnership to get that information out to folks, uh, so that they can take advantage of the program as soon as it's up and running.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman, thank you, Matt. Colleagues, any other questions for Bob? Okay, we're gonna jump to city schools next. This is resolution seventeen, or this hearing's now in recess. City Schools is next. Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 four R. Uh, City Schools, I'll turn it over to you. I know that you have a uh very limited presentation today. Uh, we did discuss this uh prior to the hearing and the reasons why, so we certainly understand that. Uh, I just want to get a general picture of where things are at uh for fiscal year twenty twenty quarter three. Uh, and Dr. Santalisa's, I'll, I'll turn it over to whoever from your team can speak to that, or if you want to give an interim.
Um, great. Thank you so much, uh, Council Chair. Um, I would like to um actually invite uh Board Chair Chinia um to uh give some open remarks, if she is in fact here.
Yes, I am. Thank you, uh, Dr. Santalisa. And uh, thank you, Chairman Castello and members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Um, also, I want to recognize Council President Scott and Vice President Middleton. I, as was stated, I'm Linda Chin, the Chair of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. And I uh really wanted to uh take this opportunity to thank the City Council for your support, especially during this unprecedented time. Um, as we have just heard from the previous report, um, we know that there are struggles that the city will face in closing out FY, the FY twenty budget, um, as well as the fiscal challenges that the city will face in looking at FY twenty one. And this is why we're very grateful that you passed legislation that provided an additional three million dollars uh this fiscal year to help provide additional technology to our students. And um have, have discussed your commitment to meeting uh the funding obligations for FY twenty one. Dr. Santalisa's will be presenting the school system's budget, but as you know, uh, the school, city schools, just as the city of Baltimore um is waiting to see how the revenue shortfall um to the state may impact the school board's budget also for FY twenty one. Also, um, as you're aware, the governor vetoed the blueprint for Maryland's future legislation, which was, which was to implement the Kerwin Commission recommendations. And while the funding for this did not begin until FY twenty two, it still raises concerns for our budget in the future. By vetoing the, uh, the blueprint legislation, it also ended the Built to Learn legislation, which would have provided approximately two, uh, four hundred and twenty million dollars to the school board um to renovate and construct additional school buildings. As we know, the Twenty First Century Program that we currently have is, is to be completed in a few years. We hope that our state partners will, um, will actually veto what has occurred and that we can get to get the, the, uh, the type of operating and capital dollars that we are really needing and that the school system uh is sorely needing. The pandemic has exposed uh the technological deficiencies for all school systems in the state, and especially in Baltimore City. Um, there is a need for technology for our students that really cannot wait. This is not only a need for the devices, but also access to the internet. The pandemic um has also exposed health deficiencies that we have to, and have been speaking about for many years. Uh, these deficiencies in many of our communities in the city not only cause our communities to have higher COVID nineteen exposure, but also impact the ability of many of our, of our actual children to learn. The budget that will be presented to you clearly delineates uh priorities that the board has developed and um based on the available funding. But it is not everything that we know our children deserve and need. So again, I want to thank you for allowing me to have a few moments to comment, and I'm, I'm gonna now turn it over to Dr. Santalisa's for the actual budget presentation.
Great. Thank you so much, Board Chair Chinia. Um, and just uh by way of clarification, um, we are going to, I'm just going to invite uh the staff with me. with me that are here today. I'm going to invite our Chief of Staff Allison Perkins-Cohen, just to briefly comment on the reference that Chairman Costello made with regards to the sequencing of our quarter and fiscal year 21 budget consideration. And then she will turn directly to our interim Chief Financial Officer, Mary Ann Cox, who I just want to say here publicly has done yeoman's work in leading the finance office during our transition period and really helping us to stay the course even with the challenges that COVID-19 has presented us as a district. I am also happy to introduce Christopher Doherty, who, as of yesterday, officially assumed the role of Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Schools. And the council will have a chance to hear more from Chris as time passes on, clearly, but we will make sure, I just wanted to make sure that you knew he was here today. And we also have additional senior team members to answer any questions. Chairman Costello and City Council members that you might have in areas of family and community engagement or communications. Chief I. Cupboard is here, as well as Operations, which is, excuse me, Chief Lynette Washington is also here. Chief Grant Skinner for Human Capital, if there are questions about staffing. And I'm sure I might have forgot somebody else. Melissa Broome is also here, who is our legislative, our legislative lead for the city schools team. And then Dewana Staret is here, clearly leading for the board and is also part of our legislative team. So with that, Allison, if you could just give a brief reference and then she will turn it directly over to Mary Ann Cox to go through where we are with city schools' budget currently. Thank you, Chairman.
Great, thank you, Dr. Santalisis. Just wanted to mention quickly that in reference to the conversation that Councilman or the committee chair, Costello and I had prior to this meeting, we are going to focus today primarily on FY21 budget. We have, we've been looking at the closeout for the third quarter. We have not had a chance to present that to our board yet because of the agenda has been pretty full these days at our various meetings. And so the last meeting, we didn't have time to present it yet. But the third quarter is generally on track. It does begin to see in the third quarter some of the impacts that we're experiencing from the impacts of COVID. That is obviously, you see more of that impact in the fourth quarter. And when we come, we'll come back another time to present the third quarter financials as well as the projections for the end of the year. The main impact that we're experiencing in FY20 is to the Enterprise Fund, which is how we fund the food and nutrition program. That fund is paid for based on the meals served. And so after schools became virtual, the number of meals that we serve each day decreased by about 90%. And so you start to see that impact in the last couple of weeks of the third quarter and then you see a significant impact on the revenue to Enterprise Fund in the fourth quarter. So we'll talk more about that when we come back next time. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ann Cox to present our FY21 proposed budget.
Okay, well, thank you. I am, okay, this is the adopted operating budget for fiscal year 21 for the presentation of the Baltimore City Council Budget Oversight Hearing today. It is my understanding that we will be coming back in June for a more detailed presentation. So I'm going to skip through the initial slides, which we will detail with the next presentation, and then just get to the basic financial parts of the budget. For revenue, our revenue is basically funded by two things. It's enrollment and relative wealth. As you can see by this slide, our enrollment has basically stabilized. Our, this is funded enrollment by MSD, and there was only a decrease of 47 students from the FY20 funded enrollment to the FY21. So there was not that much of a decrease. And as you can see, the trend has leveled out, at least for the last two years. The total revenue for the FY21 operating budget is almost $1.48 billion. The general funds is $1.172 billion, with our special revenue fund of almost $162 million, and of course, the enterprise fund or the food service operation of $54.5 million. Of course, the general fund is the largest of our funds and pays for all required operations of the entity. You can see here that the budget from FY20 to FY21 in revenue went up by about $10 million. There's a lot of ins and outs, you know, the pluses and minuses, but the, the main reason for the increase in the $10 million in revenue is the $8.4 million in state revenue that was not included in the FY20 budget because it had not been awarded as of the time that our, our budget was adopted. The blueprint money from the, from the state in Hospital 1030 provided us $8.4 million in teacher salary incentive grant. So that was not in the FY20 numbers, but it is in the FY21. So you can see there's, there's some changes in other revenue. There is an increase of approximately $750,000 for, we increased it for investment income. And there's an increase of city revenue of a little over $2 million related to the maintenance of effort requirements. Now, for the FY21 state revenue, again, there's pluses and minuses. You can see that the overall increase is approximately $7.1 million. Again, the bulk of that is related to the teacher salary incentive grant, which was not included in the FY20 budget, but is included in the FY21. So there's a lot of pluses and minuses for the other ones. The foundation program is up by $2.5 million and compensatory education is up by $2.5 million. And the LEAP revenue for our, you know, the limited English proficiency, that went up by $7.9 million because we have an increased LEAP enrollment.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
One second, just a matter of housekeeping because we were actually going to do, so the way we usually do this is we do third quarter overview for BBMR, then city schools, and then fiscal 21 overview for BBMR, and then schools. It's fine for you to continue, I just have to announce that we're entering a new bill hearing. So the previous bill hearing is in recess. We're now doing Council Ordinance 20 dash 0533. Please continue.
Okay, well, we could hold off and allow the...
No, 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 please, please continue. And if, the total presentation to about 10 minutes, just because we are somewhat pressed for time, we want to make sure we have time for council member questions. And then we do have taxpayers' night beginning at 5:00 p.m.
All right, certainly, thank you. So the, the other changes in the state revenue, we had a decrease of $3.5 million for the hold harmless from the governor. And our non-public projections went down by $1.4 million for an overall increase of $7.1 million. Again, most of these revenue sources are formulaic, embedded in state legislation, and again, affected by enrollment and wealth. We have received, these are based on the state A calculations that we received from the state in January. We have not received any updates, but in conversations with the state, they have indicated that there is, is nothing in process at this time that would decrease these numbers. Of course, we understand that anything that's embedded in legislation can be affected by legislation, but at this time, we have, I received no information on that. All right, so the, this is for the special revenue fund. This is our grants. These are federal, state, and other grants. The bulk of the grant money that we receive is federal, you know, generally all the Title Ones, IDEA. We get some money from third-party billing as well and Title II. So there are multiple grants that exceed $1 million. Here is a summary schedule of the Title I funds. So you can see from FY16, the city schools have received $48.7 million in Title I allocations, of which in excess of $29 million went to 139 Title I schools. So in FY21, total Title I allocations are $56.3 million, of which $31.9 million would go, would be allocated to schools, and that would be 111 Title I schools. Again, there's criteria that must be met to be Title I schools. Sometimes with school closures and mergings, and actually with the way the criteria moves, that would account for the decreases in the number of Title I schools. Although you can see that the funding has increased overall and increased as well at the school level. Other revenue sources, we have the Enterprise Fund and other financing sources, which means an allocation from assigned fund balance. So for the Enterprise Fund, which is a food service operation, you can see there's a slight decrease in, in projected revenues. Again, these are all pre-COVID. And the other financing sources, we had budgeted $22 million from assigned fund balance for FY20 and $15.3 million for FY21. So you can see here that of the $1.172 billion budget, there are direct school allocations of $793 million, with centrally budgeted allocations of $379 million. We need to keep in mind that that $379 million of centrally budgeted allocation includes many services that are provided on behalf of schools. So for the direct school allocation, you can see the $793 million. So we've got the figure student funding of approximately $347 million. We've got charter school allocations of $133 million. And we have locked positions, which are like general ed or students with disability positions that are provided to the schools. We have unlocked funds for the students with disabilities, which are money provided to the individual schools to address the IEP needs of the students at their particular schools. The AOP budgeted amount is $15.7 million, and the targeted assistance is $2.9 million. So this is just a schedule of the base per pupils from FY19 through FY21 for both the traditional schools and the charter schools. So you can see that there is a difference in the per pupil from the, from the adopted to the final, usually based on enrollment. So that we have enrollment adjustments in November when we have the actual student enrollment, which is taken on September 30th each year. So the, the results of the changes is directly tied to the changes in enrollment. So this is a schedule which details the charter per pupil calculation, which, you know, starts at our total revenue and we have the deductions. And for, you know, overhead, we take out the, the fund balance, the, with the federal revenue, and then we, we take off district-wide exclusions and need-based exclusions to come down to a per pupil. And that is the money that is provided to the charter schools. So in FY21, that will be $9,112 per charter school student. That is the money that goes to the operators. Now, these are the district office allocations. So I had spoken before and I referenced it, those district office allocations that we have, many of them are services that are provided on behalf of schools. Like in the COO office, that's where we have utilities and transportation. In the Chief Academic Office, we have, that's where the, the non-public costs are. And the Chief Financial Officer, that is the indirect cost, you know, the, the credit for the administrative costs that are allowable on federal grants provides a, a credit to the expenditures in the general fund, and that's reflected in the finance office. So a lot of these costs, as you can see, provide either support services to the schools or it's oversight and management of the schools. So that $379 million that is district office allocations, much of it is directed for the schools as well. This is a schedule that was provided by our Office of Human Capital to indicate the FTEs that are funded for the various offices by both the general fund and the grants for the special revenue fund. And this last slide is a listing of the blueprint and concentration of poverty positions by office, and it will, you know, it shows any increases, you know, to align our spending to the, the vision of the board, you know, as provided in our blueprint. So I believe that is the, the last of the summary slides. So are there any questions?
Thank you. If you could take the presentation down, please.
Okay. Here, and I say, stop sharing.
Okay. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for city schools? Councilman Pinkett?
Just real quick, in case I missed it, can you, can you speak to the Title I School Improvement Grant again? The, you know, FY20 proposed was $4.4 million, and then the FY21 proposed is $14. Is that, is that something we should be expecting going forward like that? Or is that just, just this one-time, you know, significant increase?
Okay, I can get the specific information for you from our grants office. It's my understanding that your schools qualify for another cohort of that kind of assistance, and I can send you the information on the specific schools as well as the amount for each school.
Councilman, was your question about the overall amount?
Yeah, I mean, it just seems, I mean, well, it's not, doesn't seem, that's a lot of, lot of money. And so what, what are we doing now? Is it something we're doing now that we weren't doing before? Or if, because if it is, we need to keep doing it and do it more.
Fair enough. Mary Ann, are you going to respond to that?
This is, yes, remember for the school improvement grants, that is a separate funding amount provided by the state based on their own criteria. It is my understanding that this is the grant that relates to the schools that are in the bottom 5% of academic performance. And so the state provides more money to allow us to improve the instructional quality at those schools.
And so is that the bottom five as far as the state?
Yes, yes, 5% of the state, yes.
And a portion of that, Councilman.
And do we make up, I mean, I almost don't want to add this answer, but do we make up more than the bottom 5% of the state's lowest performing schools?
We would have to check on that.
A reason I'm saying that, do we anticipate getting this type of resource from the state? Even though we are improving, do we still expect to get this resource from the state on a continuing basis?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we will continue to get some portion of that. Again, to your point, it is relative to the rest of the state, right? Because we have a larger portion of the lowest performing...
Because we have a larger proportion of the lowest performing, even though, our point, councilman, we're improving, right? It's relative to all of the other schools in the state. Now, sure, from an academic standpoint, I will not be unhappy if we, you know, lose, you know, numbers of schools that qualify in that bottom 5%. It's just that the purpose of the grant is to provide the additional support because there are many reasons kind of why schools fall in that category. Some of the schools that fell in that category previously, we actually closed those, right, front of performance. And some of those schools, we've switched leadership and, you know, done other kinds of supports. But what, but the intent of that additional allocation is to support additional activities, um, at the school to help accelerate student learning. So whether it's supporting, um, community school activities, additional academic interventions. So yes, feasibly, that number would fluctuate, uh, based both on what the federal allocation is, that the state that allocates to its low, lowest 5%, as well as what proportion of the lowest 5% of, of the schools statewide are represented in Baltimore City.
Okay. Yeah, it, it makes sense. And, and my, my last question real quick was on Slide 15. Um, and maybe I shouldn't be surprised, but, um, in FY16, we had 139 Title One schools. And now in FY21, we have 111. Um, it, it just seems, when I think about Baltimore, it doesn't seem like we, as a city, made progress where we would not, we would lose 28 Title One schools.
So some of that, um, councilman, and I know that there are other members of city council, um, that are, you know, that have also been actively monitoring this. Um, but by way of, um, information and reminder for some, the, uh, the criteria by which schools become Title One schools had been impacted by definitions of citizenship, right? By how, uh, by how families get counted. And the measures by which families get counted, frankly, are disincentive for families who might feel that they are more vulnerable, um, for government action. And so we know, you know, while Latino families in particular, um, are, are very much undercounted. We have tried to counter some of that with additional, um, general fund dollars. And so we've made an attempt each year to do that. But as principals of schools with, um, large numbers of, of English language learners, large numbers of Latino families would tell you, um, it's, it's still insufficient. But it's almost like we're taking from our, our general fund alignment to try to buttress some of that. Um, but it is, it's problematic. We know that it's undercounting. The state knows they're out, undercounting. It's just all of the measures we would traditionally use to count poverty are measures that frankly, families are afraid to be, you know, to be responsive to because they are, you know, and I think, at least in my opinion, rightly so, wary of any kind of attempt to get information or count in ways that might end up in other kinds of, um, immigration enforcement.
And so I, I think it, I think it would be beneficial for us to be better advocates if we could get, or what you all project, um, that revenue that we're, we're not receiving as a result of these policies. Um, just to, just so we have a, a dollar figure, um, that's associated with this. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have a state question, I guess, and statement.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Well, first, Dr. Sandelis is in your team. I, I just want to thank you for, um, I, I know how you're a strong opponent of pushing partnerships in schools. And just want to really thank you for, uh, working to get Life Bridge to do that partnership, health, the first health program that, uh, in, in the city that's going to be taking off. And hopefully that will move on to Forest Park High School, and they'll be training their trainers, uh, training their employees, uh, future employees. Um, so my question, um, I, we, you know that we definitely need strong teachers in all of our schools. And, uh, money for recruitment, has that increased? Are there programs to, or incentives to get, uh, teachers to come to Baltimore City? Um, and then I, I hate to bring this up, but there was some news report of certification. Can you just kind of, you know, keep our teachers certified?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And so what, what I will do, if it's all right with you, Councilwoman Middleton, I will invite, um, Chief Grant Skinner, Jeremy Grant Skinner, who heads up our Human Capital Office. If he's here, um, to actually weigh in on this, just because he, that's his area of oversight. I can certainly respond, but I think he'd have a more robust set of detail.
Vice President Middleton, any other questions you want to have?
Oh, Jeremy, um, I'm sorry, Councilman Pinkett. Um, Jer, is Jeremy Grant Skinner here? If not, I will answer the councilwoman's, um...
I wonder if he's muted. Let me see, hold on.
He said he can't unmute himself. So I think, is there somebody?
Marguerite, can you unmute, um, Jeremy? The chairman put me in charge, but he didn't give me host credentials.
We can.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that. Um, uh, I heard two different questions. So one was about, um, uh, funding for recruitment. And I, um, can say that over the last, uh, three years, each year we have increased, uh, um, allocation of funds within the Human Capital Office toward recruitment. Um, that has, um, each year included, um, new positions, either through reallocating existing positions or, or adding, adding like a, a new overall position, um, to our recruitment team. Um, and that has been important for us in, in getting to a place where we've reduced the number of teacher vacancies significantly. Um, the question about certification, um, referred to, uh, you referred to, um, data showing that we have some teachers who have, uh, continued to teach after their certification, their initial certification has expired. And these are largely, um, teachers who are joining the district through non-traditional pathways and are joining us through what is called a conditional certificate. Um, and we have, um, been working very closely over the last year to help those teachers, um, move along toward getting a standard certificate. Um, and that's important for us, um, as a district because we don't want, uh, you know, a, a piece of paper to be there that someone, uh, has to leave the district when actually they're performing effectively in the classroom.
Thank you. That, that was, uh, an important piece of information that seemed to have been left out as we try, uh, are trying to make sure, um, we get, um, equal opportunity and, um, have, you know, teachers of color also is very important, uh, staff within our school system. And, um, that important piece was left out. So, um, that will help me spread the word on some of the correct misinformation.
Well, and we, we appreciate that, councilwoman.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Pinkett, I'm finished.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner.
Colleagues, any questions?
Okay.
Department's chair, uh, Chris Burnett, I was trying to get, uh, get off mute. Um, could the, uh, could someone, uh, or Dr. Sandelis or someone from your staff speak to, um, the issue of technology and, and remote learning? Uh, sort of where we are with filling the, the need? And if there were still, still gaps that needed to be filled? Um, you know, the game plan to, to address those gaps?
Sure, um, we can do that. Um, Council Burnett, I will ask Sarah Heaton, who has been working very closely with the IT team in this interim period, given, uh, we had such a lift. I will ask Sarah, I don't know if she's on and unmuted, um, but will, I will ask her. I will generally say, though, as we wait for Sarah to come forward, Councilman Burnett, that we have made progress. And I will say, in addition to, uh, with Chair Chinia, just another thank you, um, to the city council for your work with the mayor. I know the leadership of city council president and the mayor and the entire city council, uh, made it possible for that additional $3 million allocation. And we have come a long way. Um, we still, though, our goal is to make sure that, um, that every student can access learning virtually by fall in, in case, uh, what we are hearing, uh, does in fact play out. And that is that school districts across the country and the world need to be ready, uh, for rolling, um, surges. And, uh, also Chief Tina Highcupboard has been doing a great work in leveraging, uh, you know, leveraging some of the community resources. But Sarah's ready, so I'm going to turn it over to her really quickly.
And Dr. Sandelis, if you could ask Sarah, just, let's try and keep the, the answer brief. And Councilman Burnett, I, I hate to cut off such an important question. And, you know, we really do need a detailed answer to that. Um, we will have city schools in for four hours, um, in two weeks. And I know that's one of the things that you, myself, and several other of our colleagues want to get into more detail. So Sarah, if you could just keep the answer pretty general so we could keep things moving.
Sure, I can do that. Good afternoon. Um, so as of today, or as of yesterday, we've distributed, uh, over 16,000 computers to our families. Um, I would like to echo the thanks for the additional resources to procure technology. We have opted for, um, two rounds of school-based distribution. Uh, we, we felt for a host of reasons that it was good to leverage relationships that our school-based staff have with, have with children and families in their communities. Um, and, uh, we, we will be wrapping those up, uh, next week. Uh, at which point in time, we will be moving towards a rolling distribution strategy because we know we have other families and children in our community who need computers. Um, I'm sure you can imagine that, given the pandemic, uh, that's a complicated logistical, uh, uh, um, project. And, uh, we hope to have, uh, the firmer plans on how families can make their requests for additional computers available to our, um, our district, uh, in the next few weeks. And I would just say again, as Dr. Sandelis has mentioned, our goal is to make sure that we're ready to, um, to deliver on a seamless learning experience, regardless of if we're in school or not in the fall.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions before we jump over to BBMR? Okay, this hearing is now in recess. We are moving on. Council Bill. Looking for the number, Council Bill 20-0527, ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Bob, I'll turn it over to you for your presentation. Uh, if you could keep it at 10 or 15 minutes, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. So, um, we're going to try to go through very quickly, uh, a lot of information for fiscal '21. Uh, we'll try to keep this brief. A lot of this stuff you've already heard. And, um, when we did the rollout of the budget, and I would remind, um, you know, all members on the call that of course we have a whole week worth of council hearings. So if there's very detailed, uh, questions, um, you know, some of those can be saved, of course, for that time. Um, Mara's on the call and has shared the presentation. So hopefully you should, you can see it in front of you. And we'll try to breeze through this, uh, very quickly. So first, the agenda on Slide 2. Um, we wanted to talk a little bit about the pandemic and then just get really right into the details of the fiscal '21 budget on both the revenue side and expenditure side. We'll also, uh, take some time to talk about other fund sources outside of the general fund. Um, so in terms of the pandemic itself, um, you know, again, you guys know the story with this. Because of the pandemic, we had to do a significant write-down of our revenue forecast. And I will explain all those, um, details in a moment as we get into it. But at a, uh, but at a... And, um, but I'll, I'll, I'll share those details when we go through. We'll go through, uh, revenue source by revenue source in a moment. Um, on Slide 5, um, just a couple highlights about the budget. So first off, there's $408 million for city schools. That's a record level of investment. Uh, that also includes a $30 million down payment on school construction, which was part of the, um, Built to Learn Act that passed the General Assembly this year. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. We also were able to protect youth funding across all services. That's, uh, agencies like Wreckin' Parks and libraries, uh, Office of Children and Family Success and others. Uh, we are, there is funding in the, in the budget for two more, uh, Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers. Uh, that's a best practice model that we've seen other police departments use around the country that we think has some evidence that it works. Uh, so we have, uh, at least money for two more of those. We wanted to do more, but we have at least two in the, in the budget. We're continuing the implementation of our citywide ERP, uh, project and some cybersecurity investments. And then we do have, uh, one of acknowledge that we do have some trims and some budget reductions across a whole host of, of areas of the budget, which we'll talk about in more detail. And all of those are because of, uh, the write-down of revenues because of COVID-19. So by the numbers, uh, the overall operating plan is $3 billion. It's an increase of $118 million versus fiscal '20. I just want to note on the operating side that most of that increase is from additional, mostly federal and state appropriations. Uh, it's unallocated appropriation, but like I said earlier, we do expect to get some federal state aid and hopefully some more aid. So we did, we do have some holding spots in the budget in the federal and state sources. Uh, the capital plan is $823 million. Uh, that's up $195 million from last year. I just want to, again, remind folks that the capital budget is, is much more lumpy from year to year. Uh, it fluctuates based on the timing of, of the availability of certain sources or the timing of borrowing. Uh, on the general fund alone at the bottom, we're down $34.4 million versus the fiscal '20 adopted budget. That's a 1.8% decline, uh, year over year. And we're down 182 positions. Um, I can tell you that it's very rare to have a year-over-year, uh, decline in the general fund. It's only happened twice in the last 15 years. It happened one other time, uh, recently with the last recession. You heard us talk about $103 million write-down, which we'll talk about. That was versus the planned, uh, preliminary budget. And so on a year-over-year basis, to have a decline, uh, in general fund revenues is really extraordinary, very rare, and really troubling. Uh, but we'll talk more about that as we get into the, into the details. So, um, on Slides 8, 9, and 10, we just wanted to remind folks that, A, um, you know, the effect of this pandemic has been the visitor and tourism-related revenues that we've discussed. Um, on Slide 9, also the transportation-related revenues that we've talked about a lot. And then on Slide 10, uh, more market-based revenues like income tax and investment earnings. Those are the, the key impacts we've seen. And I want to jump right into the revenue stuff, starting on, on Slide 12. So on Slide 12, general fund revenues, like we said here, is actually down, uh, about $34 million year-over-year. Again, that's very rare. Um, you see over the last decade, we've had most, we've had mostly slow and steady growth uh, in the general fund. Uh, the dip between fiscal '16 and '17 was just an unusual situation where we got over-distributed for income tax, uh, in '16 that got pulled out in '17. But really, it's been steady growth over that time until we've hit this bump in the road. Uh, on Slide 13, uh, the first key revenue source is property taxes. So, uh, properties were reassessed for Group 2, uh, for the fiscal '21 budget. And that, you can see on the map there is roughly like the middle vertical, uh, part of the city. I do want to note that assessments came out from ESTAT, uh, were completed last December. And that means that the assessments were done prior to any COVID-19, uh, impacts. Uh, that's a good thing, we think, because the assessments will go out. There was some modest growth in Group 2. There was some modest growth in Group 2, 8.2% growth in that group over a three-year period. So assessments will go out as they were planned pre-COVID. One impact of that is that we do expect more appeals from homeowners if they're struggling in other areas of their financial situation and if they don't think they can pay their property taxes. From, on Slide 14, you can see the path of property tax revenue over the last few years. And again, we did write down the forecast for property tax versus the preliminary estimate by $2.8 million. We do think there's a risk of potentially some lower collection rates due to the problems we're seeing in the housing market, or that we expect to happen in the housing market. And just for perspective, even a lower collection rate of 1% leads to $10 million of lost general fund revenue. So in a normal year, we'd have a collection rate somewhere in the range of 97% to 98% of property taxes get paid, with the remaining going to tax sale. So we might see that impact at the end of fiscal '21. On Slide 15, just a reminder that our targeted homeowner's tax credit is still at 20 cents. We met last year the target of 20 cents by 2020. That means there's no change in the tax rate this year. Homeowners that are in residential properties, that own those properties, pay an effective rate of $2.048 per $100 of assessed value, rather than the base rate of $2.248. It comes in the form of a credit that they see on their tax bill called the THTC, the Targeted Homeowner's Tax Credit. But again, no change to the rate this year. In terms of income tax, we wrote down our projection by about $25 million versus the preliminary estimate. And for those that were on the call earlier, what I noted was, we haven't seen much of an impact yet in fiscal '20-20, but we do think there's a risk in fiscal '21 that we could fall short of this number. The reason for that is that unemployment insurance is taxable. And so the state has an unemployment insurance program that provides some coverage of lost income if somebody loses their job. The federal government, through the first stimulus package, is providing additional funds in terms of unemployment insurance. But that money expires somewhere around the end of July. If the federal government does not step in to continue the unemployment insurance program, the extra support that they've been giving to the states, we would expect to see lost income tax revenue just because of the massive hemorrhaging of jobs we've seen over the last couple of months in response to the pandemic. So I think it's important to note that this revenue source is highly uncertain. It really depends on, partially on, how quick the recovery is and if the federal government can help keep those unemployment funds at the state levels solid. On Slide 17, highway user revenue, we wrote down by $20 million versus the preliminary estimate. And again, the same reasons, less driving activity, automobile activity leads to fewer receipts in this source. Historically speaking, if you look back on Slide 18, we had, prior to the last recession, had received $227 million in this source. And even with a slow recovery over the past decade, we'd only gotten to about $157 million last year in '20 before the pandemic hit. We're projecting 142.4 in fiscal '21. And the effect of that is this cut that was not restored after the Great Recession has really just curtailed our transportation investments that we're able to make. We've been relying on other federal sources, and we've actually borrowed each year $15 million through a state program. But that's not a grant. That's something that the city borrows and has to pay back in terms of debt service. Traffic camera revenues on Slide 19. You can see the path we've had historically. The program was shut down '15, '16, and '17. We had, pre-COVID, expected this program to continue to decline, to continue to decline in terms of the revenues we received. The reason for that is because drivers had adapted their behavior, had started to adapt their behavior to those cameras and those locations. We had also reached our limit of 100 traffic camera, 100 speed cameras, and 100 red light cameras. And we hadn't done any more expansion after that. As I did mention earlier, we've seen this strange trend during the pandemic that we're seeing more speed camera violations. But we would expect that in fiscal '21, as people get tickets and they're reminded again that those cameras are still being forced, that we would pick up the decline in receipts in this particular source. So we wrote that down, $8 million versus the preliminary budget that was released in April. Transfer and recordation tax, we wrote down by $9.4 million versus preliminary estimates. Like we discussed earlier, you know, definite slowdown in market activity. We do expect there to be fewer real estate transactions in fiscal '21 as the market starts to recover from the things that are happening. We do think there's a possibility that we'll see more refinancing activity, because anecdotally, we have heard from, you know, some of our sources that there's more of that activity, at least because of just the ultra-low interest rate environment that we're in now. But for refinancings, we only receive recordation tax. We don't receive transfer tax from those. So it's really the moving of properties in the real estate market, the actual transfer that drives this source. Net parking revenues on Slide 21. Like I said earlier, we're just getting crushed here. There's no, there's no way to spin this. We were already seeing a shift away from parking revenues as people were using ride-sharing services and dockless vehicles. And then after the pandemic, with fewer activity, less activity, and the waiving of certain restrictions, you know, we're seeing across the board, parking fines, parking meters, garage income, parking tax are all down sharply. And you can see our budget here of $22.3 million is only a little bit more than half of what we budgeted in fiscal '20. And then finally, on revenue investment earnings, we were lucky here, I would say lucky, but maybe good too. We had written down, even for the preliminary budget, we had written down our investment earning budget to $3 million because the Fed had already started to take some actions to ease interest rates again, even before the pandemic. So in the preliminary budget, this was already at $3 million. So no change versus the preliminary budget. But again, versus last year's adopted budget, it's a large decrease of about $8.2 million. I'll just pause there for a moment, just to say that for this revenue forecast in fiscal '21, I mean, there's just risk all over the place. You know, going into what I would call a normal year, or what we've experienced over the past eight to 10 years, I would feel pretty confident that we were being appropriately conservative. And if I really had to bet my life on it, I would put my money on coming in above what was the budget revenue forecast. If I had to put my life on it this year, I'd say we'll probably come in below, if anything, because there's just so much risk in this budget. We took really aggressive steps to revise our projection downward. But again, as this pandemic continues, if it does continue for a long period of time, much more risk in this budget in terms of property tax income, all the tourist and parking-related revenues. And we haven't even yet written down state aid. And we're expecting the state to go through these same actions in their budget. And we would anticipate that they'll take some of the cuts by reducing aid to local governments. On the expenditure side of the budget, so first with fixed costs. We have four big categories of fixed costs, pension contributions, required payments to the school system, retiree health benefits.
Hey, Bob, I'm going to ask you to try and wrap up in two to three minutes, if possible, okay?
Okay, sure. So why don't we skip ahead, Mara, if you're on there? If you could skip ahead over the fixed costs, let's just go right into Slide 30. And just to, and we'll highlight some of the key investments. Key investments this year in the budget that we want to emphasize before we get to the reductions. A, $408 million of support for city schools across a variety of things, and a down payment of $30 million on the Built to Learn Act. The law did go through, but it doesn't become law. It doesn't go into effect unless the Kerwin bill also passes. So we decided to leave this in the budget because we think we want to put something towards school construction if that eventually goes into effect. If you skip to the public safety slide, we are investing, like I said, in two new Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers. And the Baltimore Fire Department also has some efficiencies within their budget, especially on inventory management, that we think is great progress. On clean and healthy neighborhoods on Slide 34, this is the second year of an eight-year plan for landfill development, the total of $9.7 million being contributed in order for us to make sure that we can expand the quarantine road landfill site when it gets to the end of its useful life. And of course, the usual investment in water and wastewater utility infrastructure, $608 million among all funds. On the equitable neighborhood development side, there's the new tourist improvement district, $4.5 million for Visit Baltimore. We're fortunate that this goes into play this year because Visit Baltimore will see a sharp decline in the revenues because they're directly tied to hotel tax receipts. And then again, a variety of investments for DHCD to continue their community development framework, you know, demolition development, homeownership incentives, and affordable housing, among a whole host of other things. And then on the innovative government side, on Slide 38, we are continuing the ERP project, which is a total of $17 million investment this year. That will get us past, we believe, Phase 1 of the project, which will be new HR system and a new payroll system. We also have $8.3 million of investment for cybersecurity, which B sit, we'll go into more detail on at their hearing. On Slide 41, I wanted to mention that we have restarted the Innovation Fund. This was a program from years ago where we would offer one-time investments to agencies that we think can either generate revenue or save money. We have two projects from both the Convention Center and Wreckin' Parks, which we'll talk more about those in those detailed hearings. I wanted to run through, before we wrap up, just on the general fund, starting on Slide 43, just to, you know, be transparent and honest about the choices we made to get from the preliminary budget to the exact summary. We had to make $103 million worth of cuts. And we broke them into five categories. First, we revised financial assumptions. We changed our assumptions for inflation, fuel, and debt service under the expectation of lower growth rates and inflation. We had to scale back our contributions to the Rainy Day and Risk Management Fund. And we had to reduce Visit Baltimore's budget because it's tied to hotel tax receipts. The total of that was 15, over $15 million. Other fund sources, we had to utilize unspent youth funds, unspent CDBG funds of $8 and $2 million respectively. And also, we have a proposal that we're working on with BDC to make some small modifications to tax credit programs that we believe will save $2 million. That will eventually require a city council consideration and passage. We also paused $27 million worth of new initiatives. That was new Pago capital projects. We wanted to do additional police district community intelligence centers. We wanted to do more for city schools. We wanted to do some improvements to the Charmed City Circulator and some other things, totaling $27.2 million. We had to pause all those. No service effect there because those things were not being provided or they were scheduled to expire at the end of fiscal '20. Employee pay and benefits, we are planning, we are in the process of negotiating personnel savings with our unions. We've reached out to our unions a few weeks ago. We're trying to negotiate the equivalent of just a freeze in pay. Wouldn't be cuts in pay. It would just be for them to forego the planned increases that were expected in fiscal '21. We also had, are planning to negotiate a handful of changes with our active employees and retirees on their benefit packages. On the last category, category five is service efficiencies and reductions. And here were the real impactful things. We asked all agencies first to defund any vacant civilian positions that they just did not need, that were not immediately critical. We found some efficiencies and nonessential spending across many agencies. We chose to disband two fire suppression companies. We also chose to reorganize a couple of the BPD specialized units to make them on-call to save on personnel and overtime. And we also chose for DPW to eliminate their graffiti removal service and put those folks back into more critical core functions. So those were the changes in the general fund. On other sources of funding, just 30 more seconds. 50 on Slide 49, the capital improvement plan. Again, the capital budget fluctuates quite a bit from year to year. The vast majority of the capital budget is for water and wastewater infrastructure. I would just want to note that we still are borrowing or planning to borrow $80 million of general obligation bonds. But our Pago capital, which is the first line at the top, went from $50 million last year to only $500,000. On the utility funds on the next slide, the utilities had to go through the same exercise that we did on the general fund. They had to write down revenues on both the wastewater and water side. For them, it meant that they also had to throw some Pago capital projects overboard. They also did make the announcement that they're going to pause the rate increase that was scheduled to go in on July 1st. But Public Works will, of course, be in for a hearing, and there'll be more details about utilities. And then finally, casino revenues down $12.5 million from fiscal '20 to fiscal '21. You know, casino revenue is dependent on those, both the local casino being open, and we share in some of the receipts from some of the other casinos in the other parts of Maryland. That money goes to support the general fund at large. Some projects go right to Wreckin' Parks, and some of the money goes directly to the communities around those facilities. So the impact here is largely in capital projects that we had to forego. And on grant funds on the last slide, as we talked about earlier, for the federal stimulus, we are working with our tenure plan consultant, Ernst &amp; Young, to provide some strategic direction on how to best use the federal aid. We know we have the award from the Stabilization Fund, which we've already received, $103 million. We know we have awards in CDBG and ESG that we're guaranteed to get. But there are other opportunities out there. FEMA, Department of Justice, CDC, and others that we're using our consultant to help us figure out if we can access those dollars and take some of the pressure off of the city. At this point, we know that all of the federal aid only covers COVID costs, and it does not allow us to backfill revenues. And so when we get into the detailed hearings, you'll notice that there are large chunks of federal state appropriations in HCD and Homeless Services and Police, MOCJ, and some others that are unallocated. It's in the expectation that if we get another round of federal aid, that we can put that money right to use right away without having to go back and ask for new appropriations. So that's the, that's the really short version of this, and happy to pause at this time and take any questions from the, from council members.
Councilman, I believe you are mute.
Thanks, Bob. Sorry about that, Pedro. I'm going to keep my remarks brief and ask our colleagues to do the same because we only have about six minutes left. I really appreciate the extremely complex economic situation that we're in, and all the risks that the city is facing. I think that the administration has come up with a very responsible budget, especially with respect to the increased historic investment in city schools and in our youth. I do have some concerns about two of the proposed cuts with respect to public safety around the aviation unit reduction in service, as well as closure of suppression units at fire. But I look forward to talking about those in more detail the week after next. I want to thank you and your team for working so quickly to put together pretty much a brand-new budget based on a pretty rapidly changing situation. Vice Chair, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll reserve my questions and comments for when we have the budget hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Council Vice President Middleton? You're on mute, Councilwoman.
I'm good. I'll save my questions for, you know, the next chapter.
Councilwoman Burnett? Councilman Burnett? Councilwoman Clark?
Fine. I just want to say thanks. That was a great presentation. It really was good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sneed?
I'm good. You can keep on.
Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen? Okay, colleagues, any other questions or comments? All right, we are going to go into recess.